The London Board of Selectmen to order. Two of us here, so that provides a forum. Really turn it over to Recreation Commission. What happened yesterday, what they've had in mind. We have a public audience, and we'll be reporting, so you can't shorthand and say you've got it in front of you, you've got to.
If you'll have an opportunity to review the event, wonderful.
You may want for the audience to tell what you think yesterday, where we are.
Yeah. Do you want me to do an overview, or do you want to take it?
Go for it.
Okay. So, hi, everybody. Thank you so much for adding some extra time into the week to meet with the Recreation Commission, so that we can dig into the various budget scenarios for FY 2026. You know, just timeline-wise, I think it was on November 7th that the Commission caught wind that there was a scenario being proposed for the budget to reduce the Recreation Director position from full-time to part-time. And so, we, you know, kind of gathered together yesterday, November 18th, we had a forum, and we reviewed together a memo to just, you know, make our position, just a cohesive position. And we voted to submit it and are looking forward to being able to discuss it, make sure we're, we can clarify it, answer any questions that you may have. But I think the highlights in the memo are, you know, while we, of course, recognize that there are some tough fiscal decisions that need to be made related to the 2026 budget. And, you know, the select men, you know, need to be good stewards, of course. You know, it is our position that reducing the Recreation Director position from full-time to part-time would have a negative impact on the quality of life enjoyed and expected by our community. And so, you know, and we gave a little bit more context in the memo just about how we've been trying to rebuild our recreational programming since, you know, the COVID years when everything got canceled. And, you know, we've have like, we rededicated ourselves to a mission of, you know, kind of three pillars there of providing recreational spaces, promoting community connection through cross-generational experiences, and then also offering quality programs intentionally in a cooperative spirit with community partners. And, you know, just naming that, we've been able to enjoy year-round programming. Which, you know, we have an addendum in our memo where we lay out just so everybody understands the breadth of the programming for, that we've been able to offer each season with having a full-time director. We do also have a reference to the community survey that we did back in the spring where, you know, we heard from residents that, you know, they are satisfied, you know, we have an 88% satisfaction rating with our programming. You know, and particularly respondents really love the holiday special events, the events that bring our community together. You know, everybody loves the ice rink and that it's a huge asset to the community. And we just want to make it, you know, put it on the record that putting on the types of programs that we do, the Winter Carnival, the Strawberry Festival, Halloween, and Haunted Happenings that doesn't come together overnight, it does require multiple months of planning. And, you know, we have the Recreation Director kind of being the consistent, you know, glue that is pulling all of those resources and logistics together when we do collaborate with other organizations in our town. And so, we wanted to name that, you know, we believe that it would be it would be tougher for us to function with a year-round part-time Recreation Director just because there's, there's kind of a lopsidedness in the season, right, where the waterfront duties that happen in the summer, the way that we're currently organized, you know, really don't lend themselves to only 20 hours a week across, you know, May, June, July, and August. And so, we put in a couple of other scenarios as an alternative to a full-year part-time director. The first one being, you know, considering, and none of us want to do this, right, like, we're our endgame is
The possibilities of, you know, if, if we were to move this part-time, this is what it would look like. Right. In, in our eyes as the work commission.
Yes, yeah. So, our position is the town, you know, values and wants a full-time, full-year Rec. Director. And if there has to be an austerity measure that, you know, these other scenarios should be considered, and the first one being a reduction scope from having a year-round reduction Recreation Director shifting to a seasonal waterfront Director, that's scenario one that we can talk about as a group. Scenario two is, you know, flipping it and saying, you know, again, if we look at the addendum and agree that, you know, the full-year seasonal programming is of value, there's a consideration of maintaining full-time Recreation Director, but finding a way to eliminate costs by eliminating the waterfront staff of the lifeguards and the beach attendants, which I know would be controversial. But again, we want to make sure we're, we're considering some different options. And then, we've also gone through and looked at, you know, some other budget-cutting scenarios to find, you know, kind of savings line item by line item instead of like a big, you know, massive cut of, of a position. So, I'll take a breath there. Any other context, Kim or Putnam, before we open it up to discussion?
I mean, I think really what we're presenting here is, you know, as a Recreation Commission, what we see as the value of the Recreation Department in this community, in the growth of this community. We came through so much in COVID. We recognized that at one point we did have part-time, however, that was through COVID, when we were unable to have you know, as many activities as we would have liked. And as a Commissioner, we don't see we don't see the availability of those who are involved to take on all of the responsibilities that are needed for this position to go from full-time to part-time.
Through volunteer.
Well, exactly, that's what I said, like, we don't it, it is extremely challenging to find volunteers who are willing and able as we see, even receiving, like, you know, we, we have multiple members of our mission, however, you know, many were there last night, they're not able to be here this time. They're just not able to take over what we feel would be representative of what New London should be offering to its community.
I would follow that and just kind of highlight some of this from my perspective of being in the role of the mission part-time and then also in full-time, that it is people, there is an expectation that there is a Rec. Department, and there are programming, and there are these holiday events and seasonal events that people have really enjoyed, that many of them that we've built back up since where they were and kind of redeveloped them and got them back going, and also thinking about looking at the addendums. And it really shows the overlapping programming we have, all happening concurrently and at the same time, and how long it takes to plan these events and put them on. And if you go back to part-time, you lose that ability. It is very much focused on one event, and you really put the one event on, and then you just kind of piece that together barely, and then you can try to shift to the next event, and it gives you a really limited scope of being able to evaluate programs, expand programs, and be able to do things as thoroughly as you need to. It also limits the ability to build more volunteers and build more programs and get more people excited about what we are offering. There's no doubt that we offer, we have some challenges in the way of us, with our facilities, and what we can and can't do, but I feel like we're getting significant traction, building the things we're doing, and trying to make ourselves more known in the community and get out and partner with other groups and be able to partner with their volunteers, with their energies, and be able to put on some really interesting programs. And I feel like if we have the part-time or other options, it really cycles any of that growth, and that the people expect to have a growing and developing Rec. Department.
I feel you need one that absolutely fall back off as it was during COVID. If we didn't have somebody who was consistently maintaining you know, that for the Questions? Comments, concerns?
If you had to choose one of these scenarios, which one would you recommend to us? Well, I'm looking, this is like a nice statement, you've given us these scenarios, which I think are great. Which one would you all choose if you, if you told you you had to?
I, I mean, I would choose Scenario Three, right? I think that's the least disruptive, right? But it also, oh, sorry, Kim, what are you saying?
No, I, I'm saying I agree with you to our community, I feel like that would be the least disruptive.
Right, but Putnam, what was the total there? Did we, did you add the total of those, those cuts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, in the spirit of understanding that difficult decisions do need to be made, not for just our department, for everywhere in the budget, that these, these could be tightened up, they could be, you know, like, there is some room to move with some of these numbers. But I think, yeah, I agree that the third option is the best option, and this one.
So, I've got another question about you have data on how, how much since we've come out of the pandemic, and we do, and this that we do every year, the Strawberry Fest, the Haunted Happenings, the Winter Carnival, Santa. These are, these are things that have been set, that we do every year regularly, do have data on are, are you seeing more and more people, and that just I just, I kind of like to know if you've got numbers in some of the programs that you're trying to do, like this one, the gratitude program. We have data to show that there's more people coming out of these things, Jackie's
She's got it, yes. And then Jackie loves numbers.
And then, I know she does. And then my second question too is if you could talk a little bit about what, what ways your community, I think this is a completely good idea from a lot of people, is that there's a real lack of communication, it's hard to find things on the website, people don't notice things are going on. Are you using, I know you're using Facebook, because I see in the community groups, I see that. But are you using other means of social media, are you using the shopper regularly, you've got a pretty substantial advertising budget? But it doesn't, it doesn't get spent every year. So, those are just a couple of things I'll just throw out there as part of the conversation.
Yeah, I can start with just an overview, and again, I'm, I'm nodding my head, but I don't know if I have like hard numbers, but I have anecdotal numbers, like I, and again, Strawberry Fest is an interesting one, because we keep on getting crummy weather. However, you know, I do think the two years ago, when it was torrential downpours, we definitely had less people. Right, and then last year, I definitely saw way more people, way more volunteers. You know, our strawberry shortcake assembly line, I mean, we had some really good helpers, both with the Commission members, and then Putnam was also able to drum up another group of volunteers to help us there. Also, I loved how with Strawberry Fest, we, you know, added the Kirsarge Corral, and we did the singing and Whipple Hill, uh, Whipple Hall. And that, and, you know, I had a lot of fun doing that, like, I, I might join the corral now. But, you know, and I think similarly with Winter Carnival and the fireworks, I saw more individuals out there watching the fireworks, because we had also added not just the smores, but the chili cook-off, which, you know, brought a whole new element to the event. And of course, we, you know, had the partnership with the Rotary and the Spelling Bee, you know, which I'm excited to, to bring back this year and grow it even more. So, I think there's been, and obviously Haunted Happenings, you know, where we have seen pretty consistent growth there, and additional programming. This year, the haunted house at the barn was fantastic, right, and they, they really stepped up and you know, there was, I was manning the door, and there was a lot of smiling faces, kids who wanted to go through more than once. We, we had minimal criers, you know, most kids, most kids made it all the way through, and we're very brave. And so, you know, we do have this interesting conundrum where I feel like our anchor events, the bigger events, are getting stronger and stronger, we have really good attendance. We seem to struggle with the smaller things and getting the engagement, and I'm, I'm not sure, you know, and again, we are using social media, and it's not just the Rec. Department page, but the multiple New London community pages, we leverage the district and the PTO from the elementary school to try to socialize. WhatsApp?
I said in the chamber.
In the chamber, we, we tag in Ashley for help. The shopper is really expensive, right, so our budget does go really fast when we try to use the advertising there. And so, I do think there's an opportunity, you know, to potentially redesign the website a little bit to make it maybe more readable. But, you know, again, I, I think, I think a lot of organizations have found with the dissemination of, of information in so many different locations, it is consistently hard to reach our audiences. But, but again, again, I think the, the interesting thing to dig into is like, the big events drawing big crowds, the smaller events, we, we still haven't quite hit the mark yet, and I'm consistent.
I just want the big banners to go across Main Street, like, Canover does. I know you guys have disagreed with me. I want the banners that are like, we have this event coming up.
Yeah, we do use the road, like, the, whatever it is, the Department of Transportation, you know.
I would also, go ahead, Jacky.
Oh, I was just gonna say, the funny thing about that, though, is like, I, I, I feel like it's distracted driving, right, because you're waiting for it to
I know, I, I, I realize that all of our, like, you know, EMT, like, every, no one is gonna agree with me on that, I just, you know, that's just my, you know.
What are you gonna say, Putnam?
So, I would say, you know, I'm thinking about the ways we get the information out there, we do have the website, which I agree could be made to be more accessible, easier to navigate, and also that we have gone from zero followers on Facebook page to over 1,100 followers, and zero followers on Instagram, which is the other version of, you know, another social media 200 plus on there. And we do try to promote in the shopper, and we do try to get the word out through the PTO, or the library, or the chamber, having other people, sometimes the barn will share events for us. I agree with Jackie talking about the anchor events are certainly well-attended, we have had over 2,000 people coming to Halloween, Strawberry Fest is getting more and more popular every year. The Winter Carnival smores will have, you know, a few hundred people there probably, depending on the weather, February and late January, so it can be iffy sometimes, it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be cold. Our spelling event was very well-attended, Bell-Selling Bee in Juxwood Road was very well-attended last year. So, I agree that those anchor events are building and growing, and, but it is the smaller ones, trying to get those people to attend those and get the word out to those. And I think finding what people, what really hooks people in, what really kids want to do, I was really excited about the gratitude event. We weren't able to do it because one person signed up, but again, it just talks about that opportunity to be able to reach more people and be able to promote our programs more efficiently, and I feel like that's something that continues to improve and certainly will needs a full-time person to do that, a part-time person.
Is that gonna have the time, whether you Yes. It's, you know, and these are the kinds of things, like, they take time, like, it's not, I mean, one year, it's gonna be two years, maybe three years, and especially because we are all coming out of COVID, and our kids are all coming out of COVID, and so these weren't offered, you know, during certain time periods, so it's kind of more of these new families moving into the community, and we want to make sure that we still have these opportunities for them.
And I think it's, some, for me, putting on the events, you know, over vacation, I can't just hop in the van and sign a bunch of kids up and be like, I'm gonna do this on my own, I need another person there with me. If I'm doing, like, we had the event to help out the Housing Commission, to have people be able to go to their meeting. We had, I think, one, two, four volunteers there as well, so it takes a lot of people to put these events on, to do them in an organized way and a safe way. So, I can have the greatest ideas around, and you know, but we need people to help us out with these programs on, and this is a process, for sure. It's processes moving on time.
Yeah. Putnam, can you speak to the other ones, you know, that I thought were really successful, and again, as we, you know, continue to experiment and, and knowing that we don't want to only serve kids, where, you know, part of the mission is multi-generational programming, but I thought the big band concert, as well as the swing dancing, you know, were very vibrant, and I forget, did you have numbers for that, or, I mean, we
I, I think they're probably, you know, 50 to 60 people at both events, maybe not give or take. But they were both great, we had a concert dancing event last January, we did in partnership with the CFA, that was there were probably 30, 40 people there, but it was the people who were there were really excited about it, and I think that that, again, it is for most Rec. Departments, when you have these events, there's a lot of things to do, links and making them happen. But when it happens, whether you have a lot of people there or not, very many people there, it's about quality of experience for people. And sometimes, to be honest, like Halloween, we always talked about, like, it can't get too big, because it's unmanageable. And I'm not a rock concert promoter, we don't have the facilities to do that, I don't think people want to do that, so I think it is finding things that work for us and work for our community, and I do 100% identify the fact that that is the process we're still improving on.
What other question?
I'm, I'm done, I'm done at the moment, you can bring it. Yeah. We'll talk about how much we love this.
So, so Jackie, did you share my memo with the creation last night?
I shared your, your notes, yeah. I, I talked about the four, you know, different areas that you are are kind of on the list of being.
And my two concerns?
Say it loud, loud for the group.
I'm happy to say it loud. I mean, my, my concern, obviously, could go back and forth, let's make sure, looking at both of you. I have three concerns, one, one is overarching, one has nothing to do per se with recreation, has to do with the fact, I, I, I don't agree with the word that this is an austere year. I believe this is the year when we're getting back to normal. We've, coming out of COVID, the bigger picture for the town had been that we did some things at the end of COVID to try to alleviate the pressure of coming back out in terms of budgeting, and we've ended up spending a lot more money in the last year and a half or two years than this should be typical or even allowable in a municipal setting, we cannot have expect the taxpayers to be paying double-digit increases in the taxes every year, so that that's just an overarching issue, it's not austere, it's getting back to normal. So, I'm just taking, especially with that word in your memo, but but my two real issues. What?
No.
Well, no, I, I, I think I threw that word in, I just wanted to use a fancy word, so.
I, I use a fancy word, or, or normally my fancy word, but the, the two things that continue to concern me about the recreation program in, in general are, first of all, we do not have what I would call a wide range of recreation facilities available in this town, any normal recreations program would to me would have at, at least some ability to do some things outside besides the town green, we essentially have Whipple Hall and the town green and the ice rink.
Okay.
That's, that's something I can finish.
I'll let you finish it. I got thoughts.
And the, and the second one is, and maybe it's the biggest elevated moose and rhinoceros in the room, so we have this outing club sitting there, which is by all reports, doing a dramatic amount of things with a burgeoning staff four locations, and, and so, and serving as a greater area, and I I think maybe some of the larger programs that we do also go well beyond the town we love it, which is fine, I don't I, I think Halloween is enhanced by having people from other places come, I'm sure the Strawberry Festival had some folks that maybe across, across the border on us. And, and so, but I do see us sitting in a situation where we have very limited facilities other than the beaches. And we have the, the outing club sitting there, providing a very robust set of programs, those are my two concerns. But, but now, now, you don't want to be
Can I, can I?
Twisted neck here, go ahead.
I was like, if you want to go over there, so you're looking above us at the same time, I'm showing you that. Um, I would like to say, I have been very familiar with and part, well, when I was working over there, the Newport community and their Recreation Department, they had and, and to this day, I think they've finally got the funding for a new one, but they've been working from a gym that was new in 1950, and I have to tell you, some of the best classes I've ever taken were in that facility. I understand we don't have that. Sunapee, another one of our neighbors, does not have a recreation facility. Newbury does not have a recreation facility. So, I feel like what we're doing is consistent with our neighbors that we are trying to generate programs that we're able to communicate, you know, with what we have available. So, yes, we do not have one space, to be honest, I have not been over to mountainside since the outing club it, you know, took it over, so I don't know if they've made it into this fantastic, I had dreams one day, it was like, they're gonna make the top floor, like, a kitchen, that we're gonna like, have baking classes, like, I have no idea what they've done with that space. But from what I feel, I feel like we have a great recreational department and offerings based on what we have, and it's only going to it's, it's not ever going to get to where we want it to be if we don't have a full-time director.
Yeah, and I'll, can I just add on that? So, I would say the outing club, first of all, you have to pay for all of their programming, so, and you know, we don't have control over what they're doing, so you need to be a member, you need to pay for all of their programming. I think that's, you know, so trying to outsource all of our recreational programming to a private organization, we're, we're losing that, you know, ability to control some of that, the things that add quality of life to our town, and the traditions that people have grown to love. You know, we would be depending on an outsourced organization to maybe do those things, and maybe not do them, and/or charge for them. So, I think, and we intentionally changed our mission, like, before, the mission had youth sports, right, and athletics in the mission, and we varied, you know, we wanted to draw a bold line between where the outing club plays and what they can do well, which is offering those youth sports, and what we could do, which is, you know, enhancing recreation, bringing together the community. And so, that's why, you know, and I think that's given us a nice litmus test on the types of events we say yes to, and the types of events we say, nope, that's not really in our purview, you know, we're not gonna do summer camp, or we're not gonna offer basketball, right, and so, and that was the relationship with the outing club was what they took over some of that programming that was confusing, because, like, I, I remember being a parent, wondering, wait, when do I go to the outing club? You know, versus the rec, and I feel like we've done a good job over the past couple of years, and there's still education that's needed, but we, I think we have found our swim lanes. And I think we're serving very different purposes, you know, and again, I think where, where we have found a lot of success is those seasonal holiday-related events.
And I would follow up with that, just saying that, yeah, the, the, we do not have the traditional facilities that some people might expect from the bigger municipalities, with a place we have physically, but Whipple is great, it's, you know, limited by sometimes, we have to be creative about how we use it, but it's a wonderful facility, and It's, you know, limited by sometimes we have to be creative about how we use it, but it's a wonderful facility and the green is a wonderful facility. And so is the rain. So I think we have quality versus quantity. Um, and I do feel, having grown up in the outing club and been a member there for several years back. And done a lot of programming with them, I do feel that they're heading in a very good positive direction. But to ask them to take over things is a big ask. And also I think that they are someone I'd like to partner with and to be able to champion the work we both do. Kind of, we, I always think we kind of run parallel to that. We have similar goals, but they have things that they can do with the facilities. And then we can find that they have, and then we can find other areas that we can, um, promote what they're doing. But also find some areas that we can offer these specific events and continue to grow and be a partner with them and be part of a lot of other. Because the more people we have doing this, the easier it is for everyone.
And one more. So, so in addition to, yes, we don't have specific, you know, we have Whipple. But we also have lakes. So not all of our communities that neighbor us have. That responsibility that we have at this point as a recommission, like, you know, that we are overseeing. That we have, um, you know, that we have. Okay, brain injury. People are watching over lifeguards. Yeah, but we had, sorry. Uh, that we have lifeguards and that, you know, we have paddle boards and kayaks and those sorts of opportunities. Newport doesn't have that. Um, you know, they have a small facility. They don't have, uh, I don't think Newberry has those options. I know that Sunapee does, but they are very tight, like in duty, like if you don't have your sticker. They will literally come knock on you while you're laying down and you arrest me and show me now. So I, I mean, we just, I feel like there's a lot more to our, uh, recreation. Uh, like opportunities than just if we don't have a facility. And also the things that the outing club does, they are fantastic, but we probably don't want all of our general progress. To have to pay to do everything that we have. That we would like to offer.
So, I don't disagree with much of what, what you all have said. My issue here in trying to work with, um, BB and Janet is to figure out how we fashion. The bottom line, that we pass on to the budget committee, that gives them the opportunity to, um, to work on. Their, their part of this. So, you know, this is about, we're only the first leg of the three-legged stool. Select and do their thing, right, as four legs to like town. Department heads have done theirs very well, but we're working on ours. Then we hand that off to the budget committee and BB's block issue gets to. And then last but not least, we all get to participate in the whole town meeting. So what happens here, we could have these discussions for a long period of time and find out that, um. There's a difference of opinion, uh. At a, uh, meeting. So, so, so there we are. Uh, unfortunately. We talk about the, the fees at the, um, uh, outing club. This is the, sort of goes to a much larger question about the role of government, either the industry, you know. Uh, uh, is it, is fee-based programming better or worse than the two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we ask the taxpayers to pay? So I divide that by four thousand residents. Now that's a substantial amount of money that's going, going out also. So it's not like what we do is for free and that the outing club or any other organization, a private organization. Charges for it. That's, that's where we come together. And I guess I, you know, I read your memo, uh, so earlier today. I wondered about, um, scenario one A. Because I had, uh, I said to Jackie the other day, when we, when we chatted that, um, that the amount of money that I. See saving by having a part-time position of positions here, it's about eighty thousand dollars. And you have a hundred and thirty-three.
But that's if we eliminate all of the other.
Right, well, that's why I said one A to me is not eliminating all the others, but simply, uh, putting together a program that. Uh, does a little bit of both, that, um, that I certainly would not like to see. The Halloween go away or the Strawberry Festival go away, for example. Those are, I think, the able, uh, community project and program, and actually programs that's, uh, benefit the greater area too. They're not just a London program. I'm quite sure that I saw some kiddies out there on Main Street. And so on. So I wonder, you know, in my own, I, when I saw your scenarios, I, I wondered where one A was, which was. The one that, uh, saves eighty thousand dollars.
Jackie's got a finger.
A six thousand dollar one and a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar one.
My challenge with that is I'm, I'm concerned that if we say we're gonna do a year-round, part-time position. And people think that there's someone in the office all year round, that their expectation is they're gonna get the same exact programs they ever did. Like, and I just don't think that's realistic. Like, you can't pay half the amount and still hit the same heartbeats throughout the year. Because of what we're showing in the addendum, which is, you know, this programming takes effort, right? There's, there's overlap, um, and so, you know, in my, and again, I think it's the reality of waterfront. Not being a part-time job in the summer. Um, so I want to make it like even more stark that what, what folks are choosing. If, if we are reducing the scope of the recreation department is it's like. Either you're choosing to only, you know, put our focus on maintaining the waterfront. Or you're putting your focus on, you know, again, making the, you know, reducing the waterfront staff, right? And then you, you can, we still can get a big, you know, um, uh, savings, right? But, um, you know, still maintain those traditional events. That I think, again, um, our community loves, that, you know, makes New London special. Um, and, you know, and again, I, I agree, if this does get to town meeting, it will be interesting to see how people vote their values. Um, and, you know, my, my hope of hopes is that they would vote, that they do value these things and that would be great. Who the heck knows? Vote, voting can end up being very different than how you.
If we're, if we're talking four thousand voters, I mean, even if it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I mean, it's around two fifty a month. Per voter. Uh, so, uh, you know, with eighty thousand, it'd be about a dollar per month, you know, per voter. So obviously I know I'm not looking at, you know, everybody that pays differently based on the value of their homes. And so I know I'm not breaking that out appropriately, but. I, my thought, and I know this is absolutely not my, you know, right to opine on this. But I feel like if we put it out to the community and ask them, most people would say, yes, it'd be happy to be a dollar or two a month. To maintain what we have going for recreation. But that's what voting's for.
I, I feel, my position is that this is the type of program which is. Not absolutely necessary, but I feel it's absolutely necessary to have a fire department. For, for example, and so given that we have a need to find ways to. Reset how we allocate our money, I'd like to see the taxpayers, uh, vote on this. Maybe they will vote. Maybe happily they will vote that we still like ten percent increases in the budget. Because, because, or five percent or six percent, I mean, six or seven, because maybe. We do value these things that way, but that's not.
I, I was like, so. Is it just the, the recreation committee is not representative of ten percent?
No, I would say all of different things, because there are a menu of additional things that we could do. To spend another several hundred, not several, a few hundred thousand dollars, so. Uh, for, for example, one of the other items that's made to be discussed on, uh, Thursday night. Is how do we really want to react to the mandate from town meeting a few years ago? To go to, uh, zero, uh, electrical cost in town by having like a hundred percent. Uh, you know, solar.
Oh, if people voted for that, then that's where your dollars go.
Well, that really was a mandate to do it, but not, not to spend it. We're now at the point where we have to decide how to spend it. And, um, the, the recreation, uh, the, excuse me, the energy commission is going to tell us to get there will cost about a million. Uh, some million dollars. And so for the things I would like to see the town use, would, is moved from talking about how nice it would be to be there. Whether or not they'd like to spend a million dollars to get there. And, and, and other examples also, and I think those are ones where legitimately. We can have the same dialogue we're having right here. So it's not just recrea- recreation's gotten all the publicity because it was the first one that I mentioned.
Well, I mean, I, I have to say, I feel like it's a, it's quality of life as opposed to. I agree. I disagree with the size importance of private department. I think the recreation, uh. No, I think the private department is very important. It's very much, but I think that the, the community building, which as you say in your mission statement, that's a big part of it. That is, it, it's very important to the town. It's very important to this town. I grew up here. It's, you know. We, we have younger families moving in, you know, somebody says they're only going through identity crisis at the moment, maybe a little bit. That's why we're doing this study of crowds of nations, to try to figure out, make a roadmap for ourselves. But, um, we want younger families moving into towns. The only way we're gonna keep going is not, we're gonna die, right? So the recreation department, to me, is really important to, to do that kind of stuff. And I have just, what I'm, the feedback that I've been getting is that people have been seeing some of the activities. The qual- the quality of some of the activities declining. That's it. I've passed that along to Jackie. As, you know, and, and that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Does that need to result in the position being part-time? I don't, I don't necessarily think so. I don't know. I, I think this. If we're doing everything that we want to do as a town for the recreation, it should be a full-time job. It should be. And, you know, and I feel like we should have the opportunity as a recommission to take that feedback. And give us a chance to work with that and say like. I also get that the members on your recommission, you guys all still have kids, jobs, you're busy. All of our other commissions in town are all on retired folks that this, that, this is their job now. That's, I get it, that's hard. So maybe, maybe you do need to look at, how are we gonna, how, because you want this to be cross-generational, right? So how do we bring in other members of the commission that are retirees that might have more time? And then my other question is your volunteer base. Um, you know, we look at the elections, that volunteer base for our elections is unbelievable and those people show up. So how can you build up that volun- do you volunteer base to me think right now? How can you do that? I volunteer for, for elections as well, so, uh. I, I'd be happy to, you know, reach out to Casey and say like, hey, uh, you wanna share? Yeah, like, we'll reach out to your folks. So I'm just, I, I support you guys. I know you have challenges, that, um, you know, but we're just.
Oh, I would speak to a couple of things. I was, I guess I'll first speak to the volunteers is that, you know, this is. Everybody's understanding this is an issue, um, a challenging issue to find volunteers and. But I do feel like we are growing our volunteers' numbers and we are trying to broaden the people we are accessing to help volunteer. Um, we have kids who've been helping out with, um, high school, they have a requirement that they have to do a certain number of hours. We're talking to them. I was with the guidance counselor the last week, connecting with them to promote things we're doing. Um, we'll get them out and getting more people involved in. If they want a strawberry next, if they want to help out with Hal- Halloween or winter carnival. Um, it is something that we are growing. It is, um, we're growing and developing, but I understand how important it is. Um, but I think also this kind of goes back to the one A option of having the part-time. Having done the part-time person, um, it's gonna put, the part-time role, that it's gonna put more stress on. The limited volunteers we have, and the person who is supposed to be rankling all those volunteers is gonna be so caught up. With doing the next event, doing the next event, that those things will, I see those things falling off. Um, I also feel like the person being part-time is gonna be harder to get someone to fill that role. I think it's also true to have, have some people with inconsistencies and you could have some times where there's nobody in the role at all. Um, and I think that consistency is really, really important when we are trying to get more volunteers. And when we are trying to build partnerships with people, so it's the same person every time. Um, again, I do not, I do point this out, that there are always room for improvement, growth and development in every area. Um, but me going back to half-time is, and it's strangle that role.
So, but let me, let me be clear, that what I've said is I think this is an issue that needs, along with several others. To have a debate in the, among the town right now, because somehow, we're, 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 we're sitting right now. With, uh, potential expenditures of some three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than I think we could afford. And so what I try to do is to present to BB and Janet. Some ideas of how we might address that. This is one of those ideas and we'll see, see where it goes. I would be delighted to give the taxpayers wants to say. Uh, we'd like to do all of these things, then I think we will have done our job by bringing forward to them a choice. Rather than simply saying, this is the way it is, please come in and raise your hand and, um, and we get out of this meeting, hopefully it'll happen out. So I think.
As nice as that would be.
Time has come for us to bring forward some of these, these, uh, these ideas. The reason I use the fire department as an example was not to sort of make it an easy door. But behind that comment is and was the reality. Because of the volunteerism that we are faced with, according to the fire chief and the fireworks. We major step forward upward in terms of having a larger, full-time, uh, fire force. And so that's, that's another of the trade-offs that isn't gonna happen. It's gonna hurt partially this year because of the weekend time and so on. But we, we've had this discussion with the, the fireworks and, uh, listened to that also. And so this, the, the, this is, I think it would be really important for the town to exercise its right. To have these discussions. Yeah, if, if I was anti-recreation, I would tell you that I'm not anti-recreation. It happens to be one of the options that I see as with having a discussion about the path. Because of the, because of the facilities and because at least if my thought of. One A, which is maybe two people, a waterfront director and an events person, each working part-time. Separately, not together, could be a, uh, other solution. That's just, that's just my thought about it. And my major objective here is to get some broad-based dialogue in the town around choices.
What is our next step? Cause I, 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 um, you know, I do.
First step, Jackie, is that on Thursday night, BB and I, because Janet is not part of this discussion for obvious reasons. Um, BB and I will come to some decision about how we're gonna handle this. Doing now, but I think it needs to be done in the context of all the other choices that we're gonna make too. But somehow, before we go home on Thursday night, I think we're both hopeful that we will have, um, completed our first pass of this. Uh, budget process and sometime, and you all, they, they know that in January, late January. We will sit down again with the budget committee and they'll say, well, we think A, B, C, and we think, well, we agree with A and B, but not C. And see if we can reconcile, or we'll go to the town meeting with separate budgets. That's what, some, that happens sometimes.
I do also think we need to find a different, uh, term for volunteer firemen because they're not volunteers. They're, they're A. And so like we, as like for, you know, most of the committees. Like, you know, at budget committee, you actually aren't volunteers. That's not really volunteer, so I, yeah. I just, I, you know, so it is, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it should be part of the budget. Well, I'm just saying, it is part of the, it is part of the budget though, and it's an important part. Like, it's very important that we have, you know, these people in our community, these.
These who are available for emergencies.
Point is that the people who used to do, that who used to. Get paid to come in on call are no longer volunteering to do that. They're saying, I'm not.
Yeah, no, exactly, exactly.
That's the word volunteer.
Yeah.
So then, so the fireworks are now saying to us, over the next few years, we're free to have to.
They need to make a budget for that.
We're going to have to replace that with, um, people who are paid for waiting.
Yep.
And we'll have to make that issue too. You know, it's, it's not a happy time.
Yeah.
Talking about this, and if we really want to get, uh, somber about it, the state is continuing to find new ways to push things. Down, down, down on us.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh. My reading of the results in the recent elections are, isn't that getting better for the next two years? So.
So I, I, I understand like, like honestly, like fires should take precedence over recreation, a hundred percent.
Well, it'll be part of the puzzle.
Right, but you know, if we have to pick one.
I had a harder time finding the same amount of possible.
Uh, opportunities.
Opportunity in the fire budget. We have found some. Uh, but I believe all parts of the original budget, the exception of the library, which we don't control. Uh, have come out and suggested to us that, that if we don't like the libraries, but didn't select them, we can simply say. We're gonna put that on the, on the town warrant for discussion, which we made it.
I'm, I'm sure you guys are looking wherever you're going.
I don't want that. He's some of the looks.
Jack, oh, you had Jack, you had your finger up.
Um, I'm curious, you know, and and should we take another pass at the memo? Just to clarify some of the positions, maybe put it into. A stack ranking and is that something we are, you know, putting in on into public record on Thursday? Or, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about like, I watched the water precinct read their letter, right, at the last selectman's meeting. So I'm just wondering. You know, again, to kind of make sure that the public is aware of our position as this is happening so that. You know, they can galvanize and decide, um, how they want to make their voices heard. Um, but I'm, I'm just logistically what, what happens with, with the memo and, and on Thursday.
Well, your, your memo, you know, is a public record now because it's been given to us, um, and, um. Since I've referenced, uh, my memo to you, it's now a public record, okay? But, um, I think if you all want to. Sort of pull together this discussion, your discussion yesterday and make a presentation on Wednesday, I think that'd be great.
Sure.
And, and everybody else whose issues were debating also, I mean, it could be a long meeting, but that's all right. That's why we get paid as much as we can.
I am, um, gonna be driving straight from the airport. To that meeting, so put, put us near the end.
Probably close to the end of the meeting anyway. We have a lot. Once, once again, we're, we're into the season when there's all sorts of agenda items. Um, you know, if we start at five thirty, it'd probably be at least seven o'clock before we get to there.
Okay. You may not want me chatting, but I, I, I will be there.
After the other recommendation and other people, like you talk to people in public, you might want to say, well, I feel very strongly about. And, and welcome other people to be able to.
It will be, it'll be somewhat like the, um, July discussion, which is, there may be some other opinions that are. Come from a different angle, so I'd say.
Everybody get a full lunch.
That's what it is. I'm like, you know, and in that spirit, I'll ask the, uh, people in the audience tonight. Any one of the four of you have something you want to tell me?
And I have hobbies and, and you would like.
John Ellis, please identify yourself for recording. Loudly, loud, loudly, cause I'm.
John Ellis, I think you already said my name at the beginning, okay? How many programs do you have total for the end of the year?
Um, so the big four would be, so. I think you have to add beaches and beach management, um, that's multi-consuming. And then we have. The Haunted Halloween, haunted happenings, then we have the winter carnival, which is a multi-day event in February. And then we have the strawberry fest and then we try to do seasonal things, um, the. Christmas, we have the sand claws and the green, we're doing the festival, um, the festival of trees this year at Whipple. Uh, we try to do adult dance classes, kids dance classes. We did a couple, um, art programs with the CFA last year. We have Easter, so I would say ten plus.
Ice cream.
Ice cream is another ongoing thing for the course of the winter. Hospital days, we do, um, a couple of events related to that. Flight football, yeah, flight football in the fall. And again, I think that we're always trying to get more programming.
Yeah, we can stare at the numbers.
It's not because we don't want to do it. I think it's, there are some challenges, but I think also there's a. A need to make it as robust and as, um, worth it as possible.
No, absolutely, and that's much more.
I'm in favor. I'm not questioning it. I'm just trying to get some numbers. It's like the children attending totally the programs you've had in the last twelve months.
That's really hard to say with Halloween.
Yeah, yeah. So we don't have high numbers of small groups programming that we have. We don't have, we don't reach a lot of kids that way, but yeah, to talk about how many kids come to winter carnival, how many kids are enjoying themselves on the rink. At Halloween, at strawberry fest, I mean, it's hundreds and their parents buy.
It's not only about the kids, right?
Definitely not.
Whole community. So you have, you have a lot of, there are. The swing dance and the contras dance and the spelling bee and things like that. Those are, those aren't just kids bits.
Yeah, and and I think the Halloween event, the haunted happening event was, we had people of all ages in costume out there. Historical society giving, you know, kind of the historic ghosts information on tour. Um, so I think I agree that we do want to keep it as broad as possible, um, but I think it is the. Very simple, really powerful experiences for people. And that's what I want to be able to offer the community, the town and the community. More of those, be able to build on those and grow those rather than diminish them. With keeping in mind on the, the physical nature of.
Do you record how many families participate in all of these in total? I don't think they're breaking down.
Yeah, so I think we had seventy, think about like swim lessons. We had seventy kids per in swim lessons this summer. So seventy families, you probably, there were some repeats, so we probably had sixty-five, sixty-four families that we had to do swim lessons.
Right, but of those four hundred children, you mentioned there would be four hundred families that would participate in that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm playing the I chose.
Yeah. And I think that there are a good number of people who, um, maybe they don't have kids in our programs, but they have. Grandkids or relatives, but I think it is, it is, that's another thing that I think it's easy to think about. Kid and family programming for this stuff and that we don't want to leave sight that it, that is one of our main goals of the decades to be able to have these. Prox general.
What was your hire date?
Uh, I started full-time, uh, January of twenty twenty-three, and I did it part-time before that.
Right, I remember that.
Yeah.
I was pushing the, which would be a full-time. The only thing I wanted to ask, Bill had mentioned, um. Two part-time positions, and my only comment to hot topic is two part-time positions. Uh, and then if you go to part-time, uh. Direct director, I think there's gonna be a, a. Menacing effect of the recreation department. I would recommend that you seriously consider keeping. Puppen is full-time so that we can continue these programs as they are. And I also feel that hiring two part-time people is not solving the situation. Summer, the electric. And then more importantly, I think. From Putin's standpoint, if you were back to part-time, uh, I'm not sure that we're enhancing the program at all. And if. I hope we don't, but if Putin would decide he does not want to be a part-time. Person, then you've got another new issue of hiring, finding someone to hire as a part-time person. And I think Putin has, has shown commitment to the program and. The families have shown commitment to him to, uh, support the program and. If you do the math of it based on, on what Bill said tonight, you're fifty-nine dollars a year. I don't think that's a, 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 a task from anyone for the joy that it brings grandparents and parents. So. I would ask you to consider the, the consequence of doing this. And then I also believe that there are other. Areas that would need to take a serious look at and start to maybe say no to some. Requests and other departments, uh, that, that don't need to be made this year, so.
Would you like, would you help us by telling us what those are?
I, I will, but not now. I, I want to address the recreation department.
Okay, well, we've been very helpful, John, because at least for the selectmen, we've been listening and listening and listening and. Uh, by the time we go home on Thursday night, we will have made our decisions.
No, Thursday night, but we're gonna be open though through that time.
We will be, we'll be open, but we won't have much time to consider things that we haven't. One of the things I value with recreation, uh, commission here is they're willing to suspend some time for Thursday night. Uh, talking, so if you have some ideas, don't have to have it right now, but it'd be great if you. But, but BB and Janet, I mean, no, three now, Wednesday, Thursday night, that would be great. And Karen.
Hi, uh, just.
Karen, introduce yourself.
Yes, excuse me, Karen Epstein, I'm here as a resident and I'm also on, on the budget committee, definitely just as, as, as a resident. If I could have a clarification, I think Jackie mentioned, and these are from my notes, and I was scribbling them fast, so if I got it wrong, please feel free to correct. That, um, you would, the waterfront is not a part-time job in the summer. And that I think Jackie mentioned sees reducing the waterfront staff. I wasn't sure what that meant, so.
I think that's the, um, scenario two of, of he being a full-time director, but not having. Lifeguards or beach attendants at beaches.
We also probably not, we wouldn't have the, uh, high-end power bases. So what, uh, yeah, cause I guess that sort of got my attention, um, in terms of not having lifeguards at the beach. When was the last time, what, what has been the history with lifeguards at the beach in terms of? At that, and you know that one, standing, um, I don't.
I, I'm not aware of a time when New London did not have lifeguards. I could be wrong, but certainly in my time, there hasn't been, and I would say prior. My predecessor, her ten years, I'm sure there were. So at least, I would say at least the last twenty-five plus years, there have been like.
My kids are fifteen and seventeen, and I know there's been lifeguards there ever since.
Has it been managed by the town throughout that time?
Yes.
Always the right part.
Yeah. Oh, that's okay, even longer than I thought.
Do you remember lifeguards?
Yeah, recent memory. Forever.
Is that seven days a week?
Yep, yep. And, and, and I think that that was another proposal of alternate, um, kind of option number three is to say. You know, we can save some money by shrinking the, um, number of days we have guards, because we do have them in a kind of preseason, not high summer kind of time. Um, so that's another area we could shrink some money for sure. Um, but we also, when you talk about those options, we talk about kind of their impacts and some of the risks involved and, um. I think that those are things we certainly need to think about if we were exploring the.
Thank you for having us, Chris.
Yep, well.
Will, will cater to our. Um, I think if you were to, if you were to whittle the budget down to nothing at some point. The last man standing may well be the rink out there in terms of what people vote. That thing is so important to people and so important to the character of New London that it's unbelievable. Um, and I get to sit there in my window and watch what goes on out there and it's worth ten times what we pay for it.
You probably wouldn't want us to move your office down to.
I'm not, I'm not biting on that.
But you do, you do have regular volunteers, not.
We have a, a great volunteer for that one. They help a lot, but he doesn't do everything. He, he really, he works on the ice and does that. He's not in there. Talking to groups who want to use it. He's not out there giving people skates. He's very, you know, he's very, very helpful in that regard, but. He doesn't, he wants to do what he wants to do. He doesn't want to go in there and do the other thing. And we have great help from the Department of Public Works. Actually, they go above and beyond. But I think that that is a really great example of some of the, the. Kind of quality of life things we talked about. And the things that I think is our goal to promote more of, um, in a fiscally responsible way.
So, so the irony about that particular comment, Bill, since this is sort of informing, I've had somebody say to me that the biggest mistake. Been made during the two terms I've been in the board of selectmen was, uh, uh, buying that piece of land. So, yes, and, and Joe is incorrect on that.
As much as I love you.
That's the problem when you sit where we sit is that everyone, there's at least six sides to every issue.
Absolutely. And two, two more quick things. Our volunteer system is broken. Um, in terms of the form that we have online and all of that, it's awful. It doesn't explain what you can do or what you can volunteer for very well. The reason elections work so well is because we go outside of that system. They fill in that main form and then Casey takes over. And that's a system that's broken.
Just call it literally like messaging me directly, like, I know you want to be here, so, you know.
That's a full-time job around that thing. Um, and then the final thing that I would say, I think scenario two is. The compromise and gets you half of your money from a department. And I think that one is worth a lot of consideration.
Guess my question is, um, the referee, the playground equipment on, at Elkins in Bakken. Haven't heard any discussion about that, so I just kind of want to touch back here, hear what you thought. So I mean. Who monitors it for our condition? Um, it's just kind of, I don't know anything about that, so I mean, I just.
Yeah, that, that's part of the kind of setup and take-down of the beach every fall and every end of the summer, beginning in spring and looking at those, making sure they're looking good, making sure they're safe. Um, and the one at Elkins, we need to replace the swings because those, that's our upcoming project in the spring. Um, but that is also part of, you know, that's part of our facility that we monitor. And make sure that, yeah, those are very popular with people, um, people really enjoy those and they add lots of each. Facility, but yeah, those in the spring, we're checking them out during the season, we're checking on, making sure they're safely operating. Um, but, you know, playgrounds, like everything else.
No, it's absolutely. Um, was that operational? Are those swings available during this summer or?
It didn't rise to top of being able to do that. And we have a company, we have quotes. And I'm talking to the Department of Public Works about getting that done in the spring, um, but it is, it's not. Inexpensive to do even outside of spring, but I know people want to have go back.
So I think I'm looking at this, and it's, it's gonna be dinner time and we're gonna get another opportunity in the forty-eight hours to. Gather again. This has been extreme. BB, unless you have anything else you know.
Um, can we, I, I think, sorry, you made a special effort to be here. I don't know if you want to just kind of.
I would like to thank the Epstein's for being here because when I drove past your house ten minutes ago, I knew the meeting was still on. I can just keep going and go around. I, not having been here for the first part, um, I, I'm sure it sounds like it was covered extensively. I think. Uh, I think Jackie, you were there last night, maybe sat through the, the work session that we worked on. I think we. Discussed a lot of it extensively, so I'd imagine it probably has all come up. I don't, I don't know that there's anything I could add that we didn't. Um, include in that that you probably haven't touched on.
You got a good, good discussion. I certainly, you know, continue to. Stay, stay on where I stood, which is anxious to have the town talk about a lot of things. Um, at this point, and, and we happen to talk about this one here. Um, at this point, and, and we happen to talk about this one here. John has more ideas. I'd like to, like to hear them. But that's, that's where we are. It's a process. Trying to manage process at this point. So with that, we're, uh, taking motion to adjourn. So, second, all day with five. Thank you, Kim, for coming back out. Karen, thank you for staying within the speed limit, coming home. Kim, thank you for.
Thank you, Jackie. Welcome.
Thank you, Jackie.
Enjoy that nice.
Yeah, order the service.
Yeah, I gotta, I have to go to a partner dinner now and go be charming with.